So.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Tonight is June 15th, 2020, 6:30 PM. I'm gonna start and I'm gonna make a motion to move item A of Old Business to the next item on the agenda as we have Doug Raceacott with us still, I think, from TN, and he has another meeting he has to get to.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Liza. Discussion? We can hear from Doug and then we can move the rest, you know, continue the discussion in the regular portion. That way we can hear from residents at present to speak if everyone is okay with that.
Okay.
We can start, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, the item A was the creation of an emergency communication task force. So, one of the things we talked about was a task force to discuss what we thought we needed in Wellington. And one of the things we discussed was whether or not we should just purchase something in the interim. I went to TN. They welcomed myself and Mary Mead from Stafford. We went in to kind of see everything in action, to see how it worked. And they worked to Tyler, Millicks, and Doug worked, sat with us and helped us explain how the system worked, showed it to us. We talked about how many people from Wellington are currently in that reverse 911 system. And we had some general discussions about usage of it. And then we talked specifically about the incident we had in Wellington and how that progressed. So Doug, if you want to tell us a little bit about the system at TN and how it works for Wellington currently?
Absolutely. Thank you for allowing me to end your meeting tonight. My name is Doug Raceco, I'm the Operations Director of Talon County Mutual and Fire Service, also known as TN. We are the 911 Public Safety Training Point for the Town of Wellington. We dispatch your fire EMS units, Wellington Hill Fire Department and Wellington Fire Department Number One. The question was posed, what resources are available at the state level? State provides to every public safety answering point, the platform called Everbridge. And that platform drives a phrase you may hear quite often called CT Alert. And what's built into that platform is the MSAG database for 911. So, all listed and nonlisted phone numbers are built into that database, as well as those people that choose to opt in. They also have other methods in which they get community involvement, where they purchase other various forms of information to bring into Everbridge to expand the platform. That's all available to you free right now to be used. At the onset of COVID, we did use that technology to broadcast two messages into the Town of Wellington at the request of the First Select Woman, which we did with great success, I believe. And that platform costs you nothing. Your use of that is at the availability of the state of Connecticut in any incident commander for any emergency, be it police, fire, EMS, emergency management director, the First Select Woman. If there's a message that needs to go out, providing it's in conjunction with the incident commander, we can really broadcast any message that you need at no charge. And you capture a relatively wide audience. There are other platforms, applications that you can now download on your phone from Everbridge, regardless of where you're located in the United States. If your phone is geolocating in a zone where another agency uses Everbridge, you'll actually get the message that pertains to that particular municipality, such as a weather event, if a tornado is coming through and they broadcast something through Everbridge and you're in the direct immediate path of that tornado, you would wind up getting notified. Again, this is something that's available to you guys today. It's available at no charge. In response to the questions about the incident that occurred Memorial Day weekend, any information that we would ultimately wind up broadcasting is at the request of the incident commander. So, that particular incident, the state police were in charge of that incident and it would require their initiation of the system for us to be able to broadcast the message through that. So, the first, pretty much a high level over.
John?
I'm sorry, so the First Selectman would have to go through the, through the state police if he or she felt that that was a important enough issue to go out on.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, to be quite honest, any, you know, regardless if you guys choose to use the state hosted platform or even if you choose to buy your own platform, that's really the workflow process that needs to be followed because you don't want to put out misinformation. You certainly don't want to put out any information that could potentially jeopardize the investigation. So, from the law enforcement perspective, that request would need to be coordinated with that. We most certainly could broadcast that message. We have a very good working relationship with Troop C. And in a certain circumstance like this, if that was requested, we would do it. If it's a fire-related emergency, it would be at the request of whichever fire chief was in charge of the incident through the process of what's called Unified Command. So, everybody kind of working together to craft the message that needs to go out and we would broadcast that for you.
Okay. So, that goes a little bit to our, did we have a platform that could be used? Yes. In the case where this was a law enforcement matter when asked and they made a decision based on messaging then, and I think we've discussed that. So, it's not that we couldn't have used it or that it wasn't necessarily asked whether or not it needed to be on our end. I couldn't put out a message to that system without some cooperation from state police. And had I, Doug, if I had called you and said, "Put out a message about this," your response to me can?
My response to you would have been, "We're more than happy to do that. Let me check with Lieutenant Palmer and verify that that can be done."
So, we want to make sure. And Lieutenant Palmer and I have discussed, and I think he, we spoke about this before, that, you know, if we insisted on putting a message out, they would work with us to craft something. So, you know, going forward, we, that's something for us all to be very aware of with that messaging when it's not within the jurisdiction of my office and a police investigation. We do rely on them to make sure we're putting out accurate information. And that information that's against their investigation or hindering their, their work at the same time. So, while it's frustrating to us, excuse me, that, that some of the reasoning why in this instance it wasn't used by this office. And so, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if you have the numbers there. When I came down to visit you, we have about 2,800 phone numbers currently enrolled in that system. So, that's what it would go out to.
2,800 contacts. And, you know, one of those things that, you know, it does require some voluntary participation from the public. They need to go to the CT Alert portal. We do have some information coming for both you and Mary that we promised we would get you. I was on the phone earlier with Everbridge about that. And, you know, they have the ability to go in and log in through CT Alert, get their cell phones registered, email addresses, text messages. However you want the information to come to you, the information can come. So, it can come through multiple platforms.
And so, what it automatically, we learned it automatically pulls through is landlines. So, in my instance, if I didn't voluntarily at some point go in and put in my cellphone, when we got rid of our landline, I would no longer be registered with that system. When a message went out, you wouldn't receive it. So, we had sent out some messaging at the beginning of COVID to encourage people to sign up for CT Alert. And anytime the governor sends out a press release currently, at the bottom of that, one of the last items is encouraging people to sign up for CT Alert so that you're on there because it's, it's an opt-in for anything other than your landline right now. It used to draw from, I think Doug spoke to us about it, it used to draw from like the yellow page, the white pages. And that's, you know, slowly becoming a thing of the past.
Over the last 10 years and even the really the 20 years, landline to cellular percentages, you know, when I started working in the 911 business, 80% of the numbers we had in the MSAG list for the 911 database were landline in nature, where today it's 20% landline, 80% cellular. So, it does require, you know, voluntary participation. And Everbridge is also pulling some of this information from other places to help expand the databases locally. So, you capture a wide audience and that's all included at the state level at no charge.
So, I think one of our big discussion points earlier was that we felt like we needed to get a system in Wellington and go ahead and pay for one right now. And I feel strongly that I think we need to know what we want to do before we go out and get a system. And what I feel confident in after visiting TN and spending some time with Doug and Tyler was that we have a system to go widespread with at least the people that are enrolled. And then we can do some education to get them to enroll in that until we decide what else, if anything, Wellington needs. That, I'm not sure the knee-jerk reaction of us is to go out and purchase something that we need to do that until we know what we want to make sure whatever we purchase fits into our needs. And so, correct Doug, in the event of an emergency where the highway is shut down because of a severe accident, it's gonna take some time. In the fire department, I won't use the highway. I'll say, you know, Old Farms Road. The fire department could then reach out to TN and be able to send out a message through, for those methods, whether it be all town or a certain area using a certain radius. So, I feel confident until we decide what we specifically need for Wellington that we are covered with a way in which to reach all of our residents without having our own.
Absolutely. And, you know, when you have your own, and I mentioned this to you in our initial meeting, I've managed the Everbridge platform for the Town of Talon. We brought it back during the storm phase in 2011, 2012. And it is a managerial undertaking. It's, I don't want to call it a nightmare because it's effective when you, but you really need to have people that understand the platform, that are gonna take ownership of it and help make it successful. If you don't use it, you lose it. And when you have things that are opted in for at the local level, if you had an incident that was occurring on a town boundary, let's say with Talon, for example, and you launch a message, that message is only going to affect the people of the Town of Wellington, where the CT Alert platform is going to cross that town boundary and capture people that may be in the Ashford, Mansfield, Stafford or Talon area to help get that alert out using the CT Alert platform. So, when you guys choose and you elect to do this internally, you really need somebody that's gonna take ownership of it and be available almost 24 hours a day to help broadcast and craft those messages because there's a lot of little tricks that I've learned over time, just utilizing the Talon system, that have helped me be very efficient in getting a message out on CT Alert because the platform's identical. So, it's, you know, if you want a message sent out, whether it's on CT Alert or you buy your own platform, don't think that the incident just occurred right now and you're gonna have a message that's delivered at 30 seconds. It's not, it's not an instantaneous thing. It takes a little bit of time to coordinate the information that you want to put out and then craft a message to get it put into the program to actually broadcast it. Using text to voice is an option, but people don't even really listen to text to voice. So, there's a lot of little nuances that if you guys do choose to do something, me as an agency, myself, as a neighbor to Wellington, I would be more than help, more than glad to help you guys walk through that. But as it stands today, you've got everything you really need at your fingertips.
And I appreciate that. I think it was enlightening for Mary and I to see Doug actually using it. He was kind of testing it out while we were there. And it's not, again, like you said, it's not as though something's happening in tense act and after I say do it, it goes out. There are many steps for someone who's as seasoned as Doug is in getting the message in and going through some of the steps. And he uses it often. Certainly when we start with it, we'd be with someone who's very new to it. And that's, you know, something else for us to keep in mind. So, it is great to put information out, but it doesn't necessarily happen at the speed which, which we think it might happen. Doug, this, whichever system we use, it really requires a lot of opt-in from people. And there's a lot of PR to be done in that. Do you have any helpful ways, certainly in Talon, that you've used to get people to sign into something like this?
So, in Talon, a couple of the techniques that we use is when we first purchased the platform, we did a big media blitz through our email campaigner in Talon. They put it up on Facebook, they used Twitter. They really tried to broadcast the message that way. They actually wanted to put in messages and tax bills, water assessment bills, sewer assessment bills, anything that you're sending out from the town hall, you put it in and you send it. But really what becomes the biggest advocate of the platform to get people to buy into it is actually using it. And if you don't use it, people aren't gonna talk about it. I, my screen may have popped out there, sorry.
I agree. I think they forget about it.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna forget about it. And what we've noticed in Talon is as we broadcast messages, and we don't send messages out all the time. We use it as an emergency communication platform that affects people's life and health as well as their quality of life within the town. When you start using that, people are gonna start posting this information on your town's Facebook page. They're gonna talk about it in the forums. And once people start to see that information, they're not gonna want to get it off of Facebook or Twitter. They're actually gonna want to get it directly from the source. So, there's little things like making sure that you're always sending from a consistent phone number, that people can program into their phones Talon Alert or CT Alert, for example. So, when the number rings, people know where, what call it's coming from. When you think about getting a blind phone call today from anybody, how many people truly pick up that blind phone call to talk to the person? Or do they wait to see if a voicemail is left? Or do they wait to call the phone number back? Very few people pick up on the first ring for a blind phone call. So, these are the kinds of things that you kind of have to adjust for and be able to publish out to people that you have a dedicated phone number that you can actually report a message to. So, when somebody does call back because they didn't listen to their voicemail, they need to be able to reach someplace that gives them actionable information. One of the things that happens on the CT Alert side that we don't care for too much is if you have any questions about the message that was left, please call 911. So, we broadcast a message to 10,000 people. About 400 to 500 people are calling us and saying, "Hey, I got a message to call 911. What do you want to tell me?" "That was launched by Vernon, I didn't know about it and I..." Yeah, so when you do that stuff, you have to have a number that they can reach that basically broadcasts the same message that you just sent to them. Because, you know, unfortunately, that's one of the biggest downsides of the system. People will not pick up for a number they don't recognize.
And that's if we had our own component to it, the, the admin piece of it, then we would have the ability to control that, right? Okay.
Absolutely. You actually pre-program on all that information and so it's consistently there. But you'd have to have like a voicemail box on your town's phone system that you can record that same message to, especially for actionable information. If you're going to evacuate an area of town, you want that information, people to be able to call that number and have actionable information for them to respond to.
Great. Liza or John, do you have any questions for Doug? I want to be cognizant of his time, he does something else at 7:00. So, I'd like to finish, if we don't, if we don't have questions for him, then we can finish the discussion later. But I want you to have the opportunity to talk with him.
Just the one question now on the, will it leave a message? I'm, I'm one of those who I don't pick up my phone if I don't recognize the number. So, will it leave a message saying there's a alert?
Yes, it will.
So, okay, that's, that I think would be sufficient then.
So, you know, when you broadcast the message, we recommend that you send, you know, for immediate danger to life and health, you send a voice, you send a voice message, follow it up with a text message and an email for those people that subscribe to all components of getting a message. You select all ways of being able to deliver that message. Some things that may affect your quality of life in terms of traffic flow. You wouldn't, you know, if you close Route 74 due to a tree and wires down call, you may not want to ring somebody's telephone to tell them that Route 74 is closed for three hours while Ever Source is cutting up the tree and restoring the power in the area. You'd actually send that out as a text message and an email to people because it's not affecting their immediate life safety. But when it affects immediate life safety, you want to include a voice-driven message.
Thank you.
Liza?
Um, so it sounds like then we already have the ability to do most of what we've already talked about wanting to do.
Especially the immediate danger, you know, if there's a danger to something, again, like you said, life or health with that reverse 911, yes. The messaging part is where, whether or not we are in control of it, that's what comes into question. And then, in the incident we had that sparked this discussion once again, was not something we were in control of the messaging.
Right. And I, and that's always gonna be the case, right? Like, we would not, in any situation, if the, if the state police tell us, "Do not send out this message", we would not then go send it out on our own platform if the state police is saying, "No, please do not, you are not allowed to send out this message." So, I think that coordination will always happen. So, then it goes back to the question of, it's not necessarily the system we need to purchase, it's the process we need to clarify. So, we need to clarify who within town makes decisions about, you know, whether we contact TN and say we need, this is something that affects immediate quality or immediate safety, health and safety, and needs a phone, a text and an email. Or this is something that, you know, there's gonna be a planned road closure in a main side street in Wellington, that can maybe just be an email. So, it just sounds like we need to just figure out the process for organizing our communication to TN for the use of this system that already exists.
And I think we have a pretty clear process with that. I think there's some other things we could talk about that is, you know, whether or not we wanted the admin component for this to be able to further utilize it. We wouldn't, anything we wanted to use, if we felt like that's what Wellington needed, we wouldn't go to TN necessarily to do. So, we'd have other components, whether we used Everbridge or another. And I did take a look at two different products that we can talk about when we get to later in the meeting. But yeah, I mean, right now, if, if something were to happen again and either the chief at Wellington Hill or Wellington One had a particular fire incident, they, they know that they can utilize that system and the messaging comes from them. During COVID, the message came from my office. So, I had jurisdiction over the message that was being sent and could control it through our EMD. And we did that. This was, this is a rarity where when it is a law enforcement matter, we work with them for messaging. And the message in the last instance was that there was not a need for that. So, there was no message. So, what we want to do is make sure we're working together with them, which we did in this case. So, we still followed all of those steps. It's where the decision-making lies. If we had had our own component and the admin and we wanted to put something out, the question is, would we have put something out that would have hindered them? And that's what you don't want to do and you want to work together with them. And I did, you know, get the firm sent from Lieutenant Palmer that if I had kept insisting, and again, some of this is hindsight, right? That we need to send somebody to work to craft something. And they'd work with their public information and us to put out a message that matched with their operations.
I, I think it's fair to say that through this process and just understanding how the public has felt about this, I think you're gonna see a very different approach coming from the state police in terms of how that gets utilized. You know, it, it's not a comforting feeling to say, you know, we're gonna use hindsight to, you know, kind of drive policy. But I think they've heard the public's outcry in terms of them being upset that the system wasn't used. And I think that's driven some change within the state police. Lieutenant Palmer's been a very proactive lieutenant. We've talked about Everbridge on, on several occasions. You know, sometimes the decisions aren't local in nature in terms of the barracks commander. And I'm not speaking on his behalf or the state police's behalf. But I think you'll see a change in how that gets leveraged moving forward here from their perspective, from a law enforcement position.
I completely agree, Doug. And while our contact in this incident was the barracks commander, it was not his investigation. It was, you know, a different department. So, the information is coming from, from one source to the other. And he's giving us what he's been given for information. But I think they've heard us and they're, they're definitely in tune to, to the needs of the public, not just Wellington, but overall, they hear, they hear what we're saying and hear what residents need. And we know the systems are there and we've used them. So, all right, well, barring any other questions specifically for Doug, I will say thank you for speaking with us. Thank you again for, for meeting with Mary. And I, again, it was very enlightening just for ourselves. We, we used ourselves as examples and to see what numbers we did and didn't have. We thought maybe we were being contacted and lo and behold, we weren't. So, understanding the system from our side really can help us explain it to our residents. So, thank you once again, Doug, and hopefully we don't make you late for your next meeting.
No, I'm actually here, I'm sitting in a conference room. If there's any follow-up questions that you have, don't hesitate to shoot me an email or give me an office tomorrow and I'll be more than happy to follow up on them for you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so, like we talked about, I'd like to take the discussion back up after New Business so that we can hear anyone who was present to speak who might have wanted to speak on this subject. So, I'll move forward with item two, which is approval of minute. Yes, John?
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Before we go to this, I would like to make a motion to add to the agenda under New Business, item A, prior to the appointments, I would like to discuss on combining the library and the Recreation Commission and moving the Recreation Commission to the library.
Oh, I'll second that for discussion purposes. So, before we appoint to the Board of Directors, you want to have a different conversation about the library boards and combining boards?
No, I want to have a different conversation about what's, this, I hear that the Rec Commission is moving to the library. And did I, was I mis, misdirected on this?
No.
No? Okay, well, I'm, this seems to me to be a rather large issue, which I heard about this weekend. I would think it should have already been on the agenda and it's not. And since it's, they started moving today, I think this is not something we can put off for another.
I can tell you, there was no moving, movement today, but that's, that's for a topic. So, your motion is, can you repeat your motion again, John?
To, on motion to discuss combining the library and the Recreation Commission and moving the Recreation Commission to the library.
Okay. And you want to move that to New Business?
Yes.
To item C? So, so after the last item, item D?
I'd like to move it on to, ahead of item A because the library board of, or we could discuss it under Library Board of Directors.
That's an appointment, so I think it's a completely different conversation than.
Discussion before we get to that appointment.
Well, I would be in favor of moving it to, you know, adding it to item D at the end of Old Business, New Business?
Well, I'm, my motion is to move it to item A because, again, I think what happens with the appointment to the Library Board of Directors might be, might be decided by what comes out of the discussion about the library.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to add item to the beginning of New Business? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. So, moving on, item two, approval of minutes. We had two sets of minutes. We had our special meeting on May 27th. So, make a motion to approve the May 27th meetings as presented.
I will second for the purposes of discussion and then I have, would like to add a couple of directions.
All right, discussion?
On discussion on page two. The second paragraph says, they were, they were on the scene very quickly and the investigation was extremely fluent, which it may have been. But I think the, they meant to say that it was extremely fluid. And the fourth paragraph at the end, Lieutenant Palmer then added, "It is now clear that the word did not get as widely as anticipated they had." I think it should read, "As widely distributed as they had anticipated."
Okay.
And on page five, the last paragraph. And, uh, page five, the last paragraph. Third sentence, "Two are not relevant. Two responses noted, the CSP handled this very well." Uh, I believe I said noted, "The CSP and the town handled this very well." Those are my corrections on this.
Any other comments, corrections, discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion with the corrections noted?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item are, uh, is the approval of minutes from our June first, uh, 2020 meeting.
I would make a mo- motion that we approve them with the following corrections. On page two, uh, the second paragraph up from the bottom, um, whether it be Everbridge or reverse nine one one, Everbridge should be a single word and capitalized. On page six, the last page, uh.
The, the, the product is actually a lowercase e, Everbridge, just for. Yeah, you'd be surprised.
I am surprised.
Yeah, here's their letterhead, Everbridge.
Okay, I stand corrected. My correction stands corrected. And then, uh, on page six, um, "This is not how we ant- anticipated their last ending at HMS and will not be able to stand," I think should, "and the alumni will not be able to stand under our banners." And those are my corrections on that.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion with the corrections?
Aye.
Was, Catherine, was there a second?
No, uh, he just, he just said.
I didn't think so. All right, so I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, uh, accepting the minutes with, uh, Selectman Blessington's corrections? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous, so we will move forward. Thank you, correspondence? Nope, I apologize, present to speak. So we'll try to do this in orderly fashion as possible. If you are on, um, if you would like to speak, we ask that you state your name for the record and limit your time to two minutes. If you are on camera and you want to give me a wave, um, if the raise hand. If you go under, if you click on the participants tab, you can choose raise hand, and then we will know that you would like to speak. So if you could either raise your hand on camera or choose the raise hand feature, we'll know that you would like to speak. Anyone present to speak? All right, Janice?
Hi, everyone, I'm Janice Clausen, Revenue Collector for the town. Just wanted to mention with, uh, tax season fast approaching and the town office building still being closed, we're encouraging residents to either mail payments in, utilize the, um, drop boxes. We are getting a new Dropbox, put it in. We'll have two drop boxes in front of the entrance to the, uh, town office building. Or lastly, make your payments online. If you have to come in and see someone, we're going to be doing this by appointment only. So, uh, please call the tax office, eight six oh four eight seven three one 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 to, um, make an appointment, uh, to come in and see someone. That's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, and to add to Janice's, there's a postcard that has all this information that tax office is sending out, so look for one in your mailbox, um, coming soon so that residents will know, um, how things might be handled a little bit differently this tax season. So thank you, Janice. Uh, and for those who are eagerly anticipated, yes, your tax bills are here. They're being stuffed as we, well, not as we speak, but, you know, working on it. All right, anyone else, um, present to speak? You raise your hand and you're on camera. Yes, Michelle?
Hi, Michelle Dusak Cunningham, 41 Lisker Road. Um, I am, uh, happy to see that the Board of Selectmen have on their agenda the Board of Education appointment. At the last meeting, we were not able to come to a decision beyond the deadlock that's happened in the last few meetings. We had, uh, I think, uh, discussion about the different merits of the candidates. Um, I do believe you have, uh, clear decision before you based on the merits of the candidates. This is not really a political decision so much as it is a decision to appoint a person to give us a full contingent of people on the board. It's important for us to have as much and as many resources and minds as possible at the table when we're making decisions. There have been a lot of changes in the school system in the past three months, and we anticipate more over the coming year. And I think that experience and knowledge about schools and how schools operate would really be beneficial to the board at this time, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Need to unmute yourself if you'd like to speak. Identify yourself for the record.
Can you hear me? Matthew Clark, 43 Burt Latham Road, Wellington. So the Board of Selectmen, I, I spoke about this subject, um, must have been about a month ago, about the Board of Education appointment. The agenda lists that as a subject for tonight. Apparently, the Democrats on the Board of Education still won't agree to appoint a Republican to replace a Republican who resigned from the Board of Education. That's unfortunate. Tonight, we'll see if the Board of Selectmen is going to honor the will of the people of Wellington and elect, um, you know, or appoint a Republican to fill that seat. Wellington residents elected four Republicans and three Democrats to the Board of Education in the last election. It's wrong for the Board of Selectmen to overrule the people of Wellington by appointing a Democrat to the Board of Education seat being vacated by a Republican. As I stated last month, before this issue was sort of punted, you know, at least two neighboring towns in our area have statutes or policies against what the Democrats on the Board of Education are trying to do. Tonight, we'll see if the Democrat majority on the Board of Selectmen will be partisan or fair. Now, I, um, nothing's changed since the last, the last meeting. At that time, the Board of Ed Selectmen discussed enacting a statute on filling Wellington Volunteer Board vacancies. And I support that, we need one. So, um, unfortunately, this is political. It's really, really sad. I call on Ms. Rodriguez to withdraw her name from consideration. I call on the Board of Selectmen to appoint Brenda Abrams to the open Board of Education seat, join the other 658, uh, Wellington residents by voting witness Abrams in for the Board of Education. Lastly, I call for a debate and, and to pass an ordinance on filling vacant committee votes. Uh, excuse me, committee seats. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Testa? You need to unmute yourself, identify yourself for the record.
Elena Testa, 11 Meadow Lane, Wellington. I just want to encourage the Board of Selectmen, um, do not overrule the results of the election. And the results of the election were very clear, as, uh, Mr. Clark just mentioned. Four seats to the Republican and three to the Democrat. And overruling the results of the election would be an extremely wrong thing to do for the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Stephanie Summers can unmute yourself. Hopefully.
Stephanie Summers for Wyro. Um, I just want to speak up as who I think is a, uh, the strong, uh, strongest candidate, and that is Laura Rodriguez. I think she's a talented educator and has, uh, vast experience as a teacher in Wellington. Um, and now at the college level, I think that, uh, helps prepare our kids for what's ahead of them, what they might be going for, to have someone who's also a college professor. But in addition to that, she, her kids went through the schools in Wellington with great success. And I think it's important that board members have direct experience and insight to the schools in Wellington in order to serve the best interests of the kids today. I also think that Laura has the rigor of a scientist, and she's equipped for the challenges in education today that are quite different from even last semester. And I think that times call for hard work, innovative thinking, and really important showing up. And she's a person who speaks knowledgeably in town meetings and, and all the meetings that she's been at on this issue. I just, I don't feel that in anywhere in our protocol there is a revisiting of a ballot and actual votes. I've never, I, I've never had that experience in town where we revert to the last election and making our choices for the best person on a board. And I don't think we should start that now. Thank you.
All right, again, you can, um, on screen, give a wave or using the participants tab, you can raise your hand. And if so, be present to speak. Unmute yourself, identify yourself. All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. Uh, I apologize, Mike, there are, um, three callers that do not have video, so they will not be seeing, uh, us if, um, if you could just unmute them and I'll give them the opportunity to speak. So we're going to unmute your line if you're only on the phone. If you wish to speak, you're going to identify yourself.
Also, they're unmuted.
If you don't, you can either mute yourself back up and we'll move forward, or not.
This is Donna Cook, 77 Common Road.
Yes.
Um, I would like to recommend that the Board appoint Brenda Abrams to the Board of Ed for a multitude of reasons. In addition to being, um, known to the community because she, she did run. As a member of the Board, I am, there are two retired teachers and one current teacher on the Board. It would be nice to ha- have a perspective outside of education in a formal manner, so that we can think outside the box. One of the things that's hard with being on the Board of Education is we are only allowed to work through Phil Stevens. So any wonderful qualities that Laura has, um, for teaching teachers how to teach, um, we're kind of prevented from doing that kind of stuff. We can't get involved with staff, we can't get involved with how to teach lessons, we can't get involved in specific curriculum selection. All that stuff is brought to us by the teachers and by Phil, and we make a decision on it. We ask questions, we get informed. But it would be nice to have somebody who has expertise outside of formal education to bring something different to the table and something different to the discussion in addition, um, to all her other wonderful qualities. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else just on a phone line that would like to speak? Your line is open.
This is Brenda Abrams.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Hello, everybody. Um, I just, um, wanted to say that, that the Wellington people did vote 658 votes for me, which is just a handful away from, you know, what the other votes were. So, um, I think that speaks volumes of what the, the people of Wellington want. Um, and I just, I just want to, like, speak for myself that, you know, I do have a level of teaching on the college level. I, I did teach at MCC for three years, and, um, my children did go to the Wellington school system, so I am familiar, you know, I have been here for 18 years and I am familiar with the school system. And, um, I really feel that I could bring a lot to, um, the Board of Education. I feel that I have, um, very great, excellent communication skills. And, um, I have, uh, the skill of working as a team with others and, um, working in unity with other people. So I, I would hope that everybody would take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone else present to speak? Right, you'll have an, you'll be given an opportunity, uh, to speak again at the end of this meeting. So I'm going to move forward with item four on our agenda, which is correspondence. Apologize, scroll through, get back to here. Um, there is a list of correspondence, um, in your packet. One of them was, um, a, a suggestion from a resident about putting signs on the green. We do have a sign policy. And, um, did you each have an opportunity to take a look at that? Did you see that letter?
I did see it.
Do you have any strong feelings one way or the other? I, I was working on drafting, um, something to, um, to counter that. What we don't want is the, the green to become unruly. Um, and we want to make sure we still manage it with, with signs. But, you know, certainly in, in these different times, there may be a need for some of our businesses to post, um, items, and we've been a little bit more relaxed with that. And, and I have the ability to, to say, yes, we can do that. We can either have a formal discussion here, um, or I can go ahead and, and, you know, draft that policy or a, a, an addendum per se just during the emergency timeframe that has been declared in Wellington. So there may be, uh, a need for us to go, maybe not to 10 signs, uh, but maybe a few more than our five. Our policy.
How are we going to make the decision which, uh, which businesses get to go up there?
So I would say we could do it the same way we do now, that, you know, someone contacts our office so that we still know what should be up there, um, and what would, would not. And then, you know, maybe we don't go the full two weeks, but maybe, you know, we get a time, someone could have a sign. If there's a lot of demand, I can tell you, um, except for one business, there was no demand. No one even asked, uh, about putting a sign. So there hasn't been a lot, but that's not to say if we didn't put something up that someone might take us up on it.
Yeah, I'm afraid if you put one up, everybody's going to want to have one.
Right, well, that's why we would still control through the Selectmen's Office. Currently, you call the Selectmen's Office, Robin knows who can have a sign, she keeps track, she has a list. And anything that's not necessarily in that world gets taken down. So, um, and, and that's the way we've been doing signs there. And, and I would not suggest we change that so that we know what's there, so that, again, you don't go out there and there are 15 different signs.
But we also.
And they, and they cannot be political by nature.
And we also haven't had commercial.
We have not.
Which was, which is what this, uh.
It would, it would be a way for us to really help some of our businesses. You know, we've recognized that they're struggling, and I don't know that that would be a bad thing. Again, it would only be during the emergency, the COVID emergency. As things fully open up, there wouldn't be a need for that. And, you know, most of our businesses are open again, um, so there may not be as much of a need. It would, it would, they would need to come to us. It's not us going to people and suggesting they put a sign. If somebody came to us, that's what it would be. And again, haven't had anyone else come to us.
No. I think we might get overrun. Why is it?
Why not?
Why don't you, you have a?
Oh, I mean, I, I don't see a, we have a large town green. I think if we have a cap on the number of signs, as is current procedure, I'm not concerned with, um, it becoming unwieldy or overwhelming. I think for local restaurants to have a sign that say, um, you know, curbside pickup available, like we've seen, um, a lot of like the Wellington Pizza and Wellington Pizza Two, they've made small signs that private residents have put out, but if they have one on the town green, I mean, I think it only benefits Wellington in the long run to, um, sort of make this sort of temporary session. So I'm totally comfortable with.
Okay.
Um, expanding the policy during this time.
Okay, so I can go ahead and do that, and under the, um, declaration order. Go ahead, John.
If I can suggest, uh, as you said, the sign, the signs, uh, that Wellington Pizza put out would probably be the size of the signs that we would want, or we wouldn't want anything bigger.
We wouldn't want anything bigger. And I don't know, they want to spend the money on anything bigger. They, you know, they're not in that position right now. I think we all know that, you know, people are.
They may be a weak, weak.
Yeah, right now, I think we have a two or a three week limit, so we could, we could dial that back so that there could be some rotation. So, okay. Thank you all for waiting, and on that, appreciate it. The next item is Selectmen. The next item is Selectmen's report. The fuel tank is still out there and waiting. Today, this morning, Troy was told they thought about the last week of June, whether the first two weeks of July, the tank should be completed and ready for to schedule a date and that it would most likely be the end of July, early August. So while we, you know, kind of jumped on it quickly so that we could get moving, thinking it would be fast. Lots of things started to shut down. So while we thought they may be open and be able to get that tank to us soon, things are slowly coming back on board. So it took a little bit longer than we'd hoped. So we should, before the end of August, have that new tank in at the transfer station. Sorry, at the Public Works garage. All right, Public Works. I apologize, let me get to my list here from Troy. So Public Works is working on roadside mowing. They put in some touchless paper towels here at the town office building. They fixed and replaced two catch basin tops on Laurel Drive. They've backfilled curb around town. They've done tree removal on the Hollyack Road, Schofield, Luchon and Tinkerville Roads. They were done by a contractor. Our Public Works crew, Troy rented an excavator and they installed 800 feet of perforated pipe under, perforated under drain on Fisher Hill Road. So they worked quite a bit last week and they're working on some other roads this week. And they fixed and replaced the orange fence we had around the place gate at River Road. So that's what's happening at Public Works. They have been integral in helping us manage getting things ready around here for COVID. So once again, I want to thank them for all their hard work there. And a lot of that has been Troy as he has an incredibly small crew. And if we take them away from their jobs to do facilities work, we would not be able to get all of the things that need to be done in the nice weather time. So it's certainly challenging at best. All right, we'll move on to new business. So the first item, John wanted to discuss the public rec, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec Director moving office space from here into the library.
Okay, here's, I'm going to start saying this. Here's what I've heard. The Public Works Director is moving into the library. She's going to take
Parks and Rec Director.
I'm sorry, the Parks and Rec Director is moving into the library. She's going to use the downstairs common room as for storing her gear. She and the library and the and the Parks and Rec are going to combine. Now, this is what I've heard. Is it true? I don't know.
So I don't know all of what you heard or who you've heard it from. The library director and the library board discussed with the Parks and Rec Director and then the subsequent discussion at the Parks and Rec Commission about Parks and Rec using space to move her office into the library. There's no combination of boards, there's no combination. It's certainly using space. A space given in the library downstairs and then a space for storage at the library for items. The library director was working on or is working on a grant that would allow for some funding. And part of that was working with, I believe he's working with the superintendent as well in schools on some programming there and with Parks and Recreation and a grant that would bring some funding into the library to be able to make some changes. I see it as a benefit. You have an underutilized library. We have this beautiful library we know isn't used as often. We have a thriving Parks and Rec Department. If they occupy the same office space is all that they're sharing is office space. John, and then people who come into the library are opened up to Parks and Rec Department. People who are Parks and Rec that may not have gone to the library, working at the library. They each respond to a commission and those commissions where boards were fully aware of the move. I can tell you that no move has actually begun. No movement actually began today. But yes, that was the plan.
What's, what, where you, what year were you going to store in the library? You said that we're going to
Parks and Rec. She has a storage space here and that would go into a space in the library. And that would be a space behind the big common room.
Okay. Where I heard this, well, it doesn't matter. The question is this, this still seems like a fairly large thing. And you say the Parks and Rec and the library discussed this. Would have been nice, but I heard this and I went to look at their minutes. And Parks and Rec hasn't posted any minutes since January. And the library hasn't posted any minutes since February. So we have no idea what, if this is going on. The library director has been spending an awful lot of time looking for looking for grants and we haven't seen anything. And now I understand, and here again, I understand he resigned.
So I was not at the last library board meeting. I believe they had a meeting on Friday evening, which I did not attend. And I have not seen a video of it posted, so I, that I don't know. I can tell you that there was discussion. Has he been looking for a lot of grants? Yes. Has he actually started working on grants? Yes. Did COVID slow some things down? Absolutely. I don't know that looking for grants and trying to benefit our library or our Parks and Rec Department is a bad thing. I think that's a good thing. I think funding in a grant takes some pressure off the town. I'm not sure that's a negative.
Well, if he had actually been doing some library directing rather than looking for grants.
Well.
I'm not sure the, the whole thing here.
Have you been living in the same spring and winter that I've been living in? Everything's been closed. The library's been closed for months.
Right.
So he's working by securing grant funding for the town. I, I, it boggles my mind that that would at all be a problem.
Before COVID started, he was in office for six months. And all, all I heard was he was looking for grants, looking for grants, looking for grants.
Not a bad thing. We say all the time, if we could get some funding outside, it would take the pressure off of the town and our budget. So why is that?
Apply for a grant?
I'm sorry?
Did he ever apply for a grant?
I believe he's in the process of applying for a grant. I'm not going to speak for what he's actually done. That's, take that to, that question to the library board, John. The grants don't have to come through me. I don't see them, nor do I approve them. So.
Nobody seems to know that he, nobody seems to.
Well, I don't, John, did you pick up the phone and maybe speak, maybe, maybe instead of I heard from someone, did you speak to the library director? He has, he has email and he responds to it. He has a phone and he responds.
We don't have a library director anymore. We have a, we have a interim library director, maybe, because apparently he appointed an intern as the interim library director.
Well, these are all questions for the library board. And that's where I would direct them. I certainly don't have answers for you now. Again, I was not at a library board meeting. So I don't know what transpired there.
Well, we seem to have problems with the library board too because the library or the board chairperson doesn't seem to want to talk to me or to any, anybody else. And she seems to run things by herself.
In your opinion.
In my opinion, yeah. I'm sure, so I don't know. But now we're moving the rec director's office over there. And then when we get a new library director, they're going to come in and are they going to have anything to say about that?
I would say it would be part of the conversation. I don't know why it wouldn't. Look, this was made with a library director that's currently on staff. I can't speak to what will happen in the future with someone else. That's not something I'm aware of or anticipated. So discussions were had, plans were made. I can tell you, no one has actually moved yet. But again, I don't see that helping two of our town programs thrive and work together. I'm not sure why this is scandalous. I'm not sure why this is a bad thing. I don't. I don't know why you, you seem, you seem to see it as a negative and I don't know why we assume it's a negative to draw people into the library in any way, shape or form. And if a program that's thriving here can draw people into the library or the library can draw people into Parks and Rec, where's the harm there, John?
I'm not concerned, I'm not undersure, I'm not understanding what the concern is either with this potential move. So if you could clarify what the, what like, what's the problem?
Well, we've been, we've been watching here on the spending. And I was kind of dropping out of this because earlier I was trying to get involved in it and then I got sick. And then it's been going and we've had other things to worry about. But the guy, he made these changes and now he's walked out. He resigned. I don't know that his, last I checked this afternoon, his resignation had not been turned into the town clerk. But he did announce at Friday night's meeting that he resigned.
I don't believe he has to resign to the town clerk. He worked, I believe that goes through the library board. His resignation would not go through the town clerk's office.
Really?
I do not believe so. I will double check on that, John, but I don't believe so. You know, he is
All town employees are all
He's not a town, he's not a town employee. He's not considered a town employee.
That could be. Well, okay, then if, then if we have his resignation writing, we'll have it in writing.
It would go to the, again, it would go to the library board. I know, I can, I can tell you that no other, when the last library director resigned, it did not go through this building. And I was not aware of it until I knew they were searching, so.
From a member of the library board who is theirs said they were not shown the resignation. They were just told by the, by the chair that give you die.
Okay.
So this is not
I have no reason to, if that's true, I have no reason to believe the chair was lying.
Well, I have no reason either. I'm saying, that's why I'm saying he resigned.
Okay.
This was on Friday, Friday night. So I guess we would have to say that the minutes should be in by tomorrow. That would be Tuesday. And again, that's another problem which we have dating back to January on the part of the Rec Commission and February on the part of the Board of Libraries. We have no minutes. They haven't been filing their minutes. What do we do about that?
I would suggest you speak to those board chairs. And we can do that. Listen, the town clerk files them when she receives them. She doesn't, she doesn't chase them. So it's their responsibility to turn them in.
We had that discussion, we had that discussion once upon a time. I remember you and me and the town clerk. And that was the decision that it is not her, her job to chase them down. She just files them when she gets them. So now who takes the responsibility to chase them down if the board chair is not doing their job?
Well, it would be, so listen, John, I can communicate with the board, the chairs of both of those boards and ask them regarding their minutes and that they need to be filed and they need to follow procedure. You could certainly send the same email and as a citizen.
And I can send it as a second selectman, but I would think that would be your, part of your duty.
Sure. You know, I know they both have secretaries and it's their responsibility to turn them in as it is every other board.
I know, I know that too.
Okay.
And also, what are we going to do about the interim director?
That is not a matter for the Board of Selectmen. That is a matter for the Library Board of Directors. That is not a Board of Selectmen matter.
So
The library has a board and that is under their purview and their jurisdiction is not a matter that comes before the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
I think we would be, it would be an incredible overreach for us to start to hiring that leads to whether or not we, you know, firing, disciplining. That, that's not the Board of Selectmen's position. The library board is run by a library board of directors by statute.
I, I will check and if this person is being paid as an, as a director or as, on the same level as the director who's being paid, this interim director, I will, I will refuse to sign that, sign off on that check.
We do not sign off on those checks, John. That is not, we do not, that is, it's library spending. We have no oversight over spending at the library.
You mean, when I, when I used to before we
It is a grant. The library board receives a grant. They get a lump sum and their spending is not overseen by the Board of Selectmen, similar to the fire department?
Well, then, in that case, then who's responsibility? And please don't tell me the board of directors.
Okay.
If the board, the board of directors has not appointed this person. But if I understand, and here again, I don't know because there's no minutes anywhere, what happened? But from what I understand, the director or the previous director appointed one of his interns as the interim director. And if they're going to pay him, pay that interim director, that's not, that's not a legal appointment.
So the board, that's a matter for the library board to take up, John. And that's a matter for the library board to discuss and to vote on. We do not. Look, I can make a phone call, I can send an email and have a conversation with the library board of directors, but it is not our role to tell the, they have a vote. They have a board and it has procedures. And if they need to vote on, they have bylaws, they need to follow them.
Really?
What would you like, what would you like us to do, John? There's a statute in the library is run by a library board of directors, an elected board of six. So we've already discussed, we can't change the terms because it's by statute. This is not, this is not a matter for the Board of Selectmen. We can discuss it, but we don't have any authority.
I thought you were an ex officio member of the board.
I am.
And you could go to a meeting and lay down the law then as an ex officio member. You've
I did, I did not attend the meeting that you're referencing. So I don't know any of, what I'm hearing, I'm hearing from you.
Okay. And it doesn't worry you at all?
I didn't say it didn't worry me. I think you're looking for us to make decisions that we don't have the authority to make.
I see that we're having a conversation. There's actually no agenda item for us to be deciding upon. We are in, we're having a discussion that was not on the agenda initially. Nobody is prepared to have this conversation. And there actually isn't any motion that anybody has made. So if I can request that we move along through the agenda to the agenda items that are actually on the, the posted agenda that have decisions that need to be made. I would like to move in that direction. John, you have not articulated a specific course of action that you would like anybody to take. So I would suggest that we move along.
I'll move to now new item B under new business, Library Board of Directors. There was a resignation, a vacancy at the Library Board of Directors. And the light, you should each have a letter, the, from the library chair that the library board would like to recommend Sarah Jean to fill the vacancy. Ms. Jean is a longtime resident of Wellington and has shown a desire to serve the library by previously running for the board. Ms. Jean will bring her focus and organizational skills to the board and we feel her service would be an asset to the town. I've received no other communication from anyone regarding this appointment just from the library board. from anyone regarding this appointment, just from the library board. And so with that, I will make a motion to appoint Sarah Jean as a regular member of the Library Board of Directors, filling a vacancy effective June 16, 2020, expiring, I'm sorry, expiring November 2, 2021, which is the next municipal election.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, the Republican Party is waiting on our town committee meeting to act, to act on this. And here again, as I hear from one of the Library Board members, they were not allowed to, now here again, there were no minutes, but they were not allowed to ask any questions of Ms. Jean. Is she, is she logged on here tonight? Sarah Jean here? Apparently not.
See her name. I know the library board. All I have is the letter from dated June 9, and nothing has come from anyone else, and I know the appointment. The seat was vacated by Liz Perry
Right.
some number of weeks ago. It's been quite some time. And nothing else has become before, to my understanding, either the library board or nothing has come through this office.
Well, our meeting has been, is next week, and we'd hope to get, get there. We have, we have a good candidate, but there are some problems that we need to straighten out. In the meantime, I'm disturbed. Ms. Jean is a longtime resident of Wellington and has shown a desire to serve the library by previously running for the board. Well, she hasn't run for the board at least since 2011. So I'm not sure why that's there. And that makes me a little nervous, so I would like to table this until, I'll move to table this until our next meeting.
We can't make a motion without voting on the motion that's currently on the
True.
table.
So there's a current motion on the table to appoint Sarah Jean as a regular member. Any further discussion on that appointment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
No abstentions. Motion carries. The next item is a Board of Education appointment. As you all know, at our last meeting, we discussed this. We sent this back, I'm sorry, not in our last meeting, it was a month ago, and asked the Board of Education to work together as a board. I attended that meeting, and that absolutely did not happen. Certainly, the conversation was almost all but shut down by the chair when a member wanted to speak about the candidates, to talk about the candidates, which is what we, as a board, asked them to do. And he wanted them only to speak about the candidate he believed was their candidate. I was incredibly disappointed that they couldn't work together to find a, some common ground to come up with someone who was best suited to fill this role. I will say, one of the things I continuously hear over and over from members of one political party is that we are not respecting the will, and we, it's been directed at Liza and I, and Democratic members of the Board of Education, not respecting the will of the voters. I couldn't disagree more. Liz Perry was, was on the ballot. She was voted in, and she was seated in that position. She vacated that. The policies in place were followed. They were followed to a T, and not one of those policies mandates how and who is replaced. That is not something this town has wanted, so the voters in this town didn't express their will on only being able to fill it with a particular political party. So to say that on something we have yet to even vote on, or have a conversation really here about, that we are not respecting the will of the voters, is a little presumptive. I will say, I've heard several people here discuss the number of votes someone who wasn't elected got. There was one vote between two candidates. So again, there's no, we're following the policies which say if the Board of Education does not fill it, it comes to the Board of Selectmen. It's the same with many other vacancies. The, this is the process set in place for the town of Wellington. If the townspeople want to change that, that's something that comes down the road, but these vacancies need to be filled. We need functioning boards, and I'm not sure why everything needs to be us and them. It, we couldn't be doing less of a service to our residents, in my opinion. So now it's back to us to fill a vacancy, so the Board of Education is a fully appointed board, appointed or elected board, and can move forward and do the business for education in Wellington, which couldn't be more crucial, especially in these unusual circumstances. So with that, I'm going to make, well, no, I won't. We, we had two names before us. We had Brenda Abrams and Laura Rodriguez. We were able to hear from both of them at our last meeting. I heard Brenda early, speak earlier, and I see Laura Rodriguez is on the call. If either of you would like to speak to them before any potential motion is made.
Yes.
Would you?
Or them to speak?
I'm asking, I'm asking if we would like to hear from either of them before any potential motion is made.
John?
I know Brenda is still interested in the position. I did attend last week's Board of Education position. I see Ms. Rodriguez is now on camera. Is, I will ask, is this still a position you are interested and want to be considered for? I heard Brenda say earlier she was, and I'll ask Ms. Rodriguez if anything has changed since Tuesday.
No, I am still interested. Thank you.
So we still have two candidates who want to be considered for this position. And I believe it's our responsibility now, as the Board of Education, is not able to move forward in a direction of working together for any sort of compromise, and I don't know that a compromise means you have to pick one or the other, but I think they, you know, should have had better debate about why someone should, other than an election that transpired, and that election was honored. Liz Perry was elected, and she was seated, so that election was absolutely honored, in my opinion, and now we have, we have the duty of working within the policies we have to fill these appointments.
This is Brenda Abrams.
One moment, Brenda, Liza?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Laura Rodriguez to the Board of Education.
Do you have the draft of a-
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think Liza gave you each something, so, with a blank, so we make sure we have the right language.
Yep. I'm to appoint Laura Rodriguez to the Wellington Board of Education, filling a vacancy. Term is effective June 15, 2020, and will expire on November 2, 2021, which is the next municipal election.
I'll second that discussion.
I, I've heard, I agree. Ms. Rodriguez is very, very qualified. If she were looking to become superintendent of schools around here, I think, I probably would for that. But this is the Board of Education. Superintendent runs the schools. The Board of Education finds the person to run the schools and sets policy. And I keep hearing that, well, we have, we need teachers on it. Because teachers understand the system. Well, I think non-teachers can understand the system too. But one of my pet peeves is members of the teachers' union are dealing with the union. And I was really upset. I went to, or one of their recent Board of Education meetings. Somebody came up with a suggestion that because of the economy under the current system, where it was breaking down, and people were losing jobs, and anybody in the private sector either was losing jobs or getting their hours cut back, losing pay, and suggested that maybe the teachers should forego their annual raise this year because of that. And I believe the proposal was to send a letter to the governor, asking him to issue an executive order doing that. And, okay, that's, that's open to discussion, and one member of the Board of Education gave a speech, which, to paraphrase it, said, "We're teachers. We're wonderful people. We work hard. We deserve a raise, because we're teachers. We're wonderful people. We work hard, and we deserve a raise." And that was basically the argument that I heard. And so now, talk about, is this a conflict of interest? I would say it was, and it was not about what classes we're going to teach. It was not about which teachers we should hire. It was all about the pay. And I, I just feel that this is a conflict of interest. Not been good for a long, long time. Yes, I know it's very good for teachers who get paid. I know it's very good for administrators and everybody else. And yes, I would love to see them all get paid everything they want. I would love to see everybody get paid that. But where does the money come from, and who makes the decision?
What is the connection that you're making between that, that statement regarding conflicts of interests and teacher pay and unions? What is the connection between that and the conversation about who, about the motion that was just made regarding Laura Rodriguez?
I'm saying that-
Can you connect that dot for me? Like, what is that? How is that reflected on the motion that was just made?
As Mr. Clark said earlier, we have two retired teachers and one active teacher on the board right now. And this would be three retired teachers and one active teacher, and these teachers are voting constantly on pay. And that's always a big, always a big argument every year. Teachers, so that's the situation there.
So I'll say there's no conflict of interest. In my opinion, they are allowed to be members. The conflict of interest would be if there was a reason that as a teacher, she could not be a member. You can't be a member of the Board of Education in Wellington if you are a teacher in Wellington. So she's not in the Wellington Teachers Union, and so therefore she is qualified to sit on the Board of Education. So I don't know. It sounds like you're suggesting no teacher should sit on our Board of Ed for whatever reason. I think, I think both of these, I think both of these ladies bring something to the table. I think either would be beneficial to the board. We only have one seat, and we only have one to fill. And I, I believe that Ms. Rodriguez is extremely qualified as a resident to fill that seat. And I don't, that's not to say I don't believe Ms. Abrams is not qualified at all. I'm not saying that. I think either of them are qualified, and I agree with the Board of Education Chair when Mr. Arico said the same thing. Any of these people would benefit the Board of Education and the townspeople. So statements made by other board members don't reflect, again, the motion on the table whether or not Ms. Abrams or Ms. Rodriguez are qualified. So the motion is to appoint Ms. Rodriguez to fill the vacancy.
So this is Brenda. May I raise, I'm raising my hand. Can I see?
You are, Brenda, but I apologize. This is not a present to speak right now. This is now the, the board has a motion on the table that the board is debating.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
And I would like to also address the statement that's been made multiple times about respecting the will of the voters. Let's be honest, Erica, John, and I are the will of the voters. We have been tasked for making these decisions. The three of us are responsible for making this decision now, because the process didn't succeed down at the Board of Education level. So this is our job, and the voters voted for us, and I take that job very seriously. And I looked at both candidates. We heard them speak last meeting or two meetings ago. I've read their statements. I've read the statements now of both of the political parties. And given all that information, my job is to make the decision that I believe is best for the town of Wellington. And be it a slight margin, I do believe that this is the decision that is best for the town of Wellington. So feel free to challenge, anybody can feel free to challenge that point of the will of the voters. I am the will of the voters, and I am speaking on behalf of those who voted for me. I'm speaking on behalf of those who've been in contact with me. And I confidently make this decision, given all the information that has been presented to us over the last several weeks.
Well, I agree with the, the things Liza has just said. Once again, this board, Liza, myself, and John all hoped that the Board of Education would make this vote, and that we would not be back in this position again. But we are, and it's our job to move forward and make a decision, and I think we're ready to do that. So without any further, any other discussion on the matter? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Laura Rodriguez to fill the Board of Education vacancy until the next municipal election signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I want to thank both Ms. Abrams and Ms. Rodriguez for, maybe it's Mrs., I'm sorry, for your willingness to serve your community, and I, I encourage Brenda not to, not to walk away from wanting to serve in Wellington in some capacity. I still believe she would be a qualified candidate. So thank you. All right, next item, item, we'll now see, is acceptance of an additional agreement, number two, for the Cattle Rock Brownfields grant. You have some information, so I'm going to make a, I'm going to move to accept the additional services agreement, number two, to BL companies for the preparation of a remedial action plan for the Cattle Rock property in the amount of $6,500 to be covered by the existing Brownfield grant with the town of Ashford.
I'll second that.
Seconded by John. So you should have each received the letter to both our board and the Ashford Board of Selectmen from Christine Appicoff and then Robin Campbell. So with the monies in the current Brownfields grant that we had applied for, this will allow for a remediation plan to be developed, and then you'll see later on the agenda that the plan is then to apply for a remediation grant to cover the expenses that come out of the plan. So we're using more of the existing funds. There were still monies left over to be able to develop the remediation plan, a remediation action plan. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is Cattle Rock Phase Three Remediation Grant Application. So I'll move to apply with the town of Ashford for Phase Three of the Cattle Rock Remediation Grant Application, once the grant process is open. So again, we just voted to allow the funding from the current grant to come with the remediation action plan, and that would be carried out with funding from an additional Phase Three grant. So as soon as the grant application process is open and available, we plan to submit, and I think you see a proposal in your packet that speaks to that, or the information about applying. Maybe you can have a copy. Was there a second?
Second.
Oh, sorry. All right, any discussion? We can discuss before we have a second. I apologize. All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Old business, so we'll go back to the creation of an emergency communication task force. So we heard from Mr. Resakad. I want to, once again, thank him for being willing to come out and speak with us regarding this matter. come out and speak with us regarding this matter. I'm going to, I'm gonna make a motion here. Um, I moved to form a committee called the Emergency Communications Task Force, consisting of ten members. One member of law enforcement that's non-voting, one member representing Wellington EMS, one member that's the Wellington EMD, the first selectman, one member from Board of Finance, recommended by the Board of Finance, one member from Board of Education, recommended by the Board of Education, and four members at large, town residents. And that the Board of Selectmen will appoint the chairperson of the committee. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. So, we, we heard Mr. Resacata talk to us a little bit about the process. Um, it was enlightening to go there and kind of see it, see it in action. Um, it was even more encouraging to hear him say that despite what we may move on, we have the ability. I think we know we have the ability to send out a reverse 911. Whether or not we have messaging to go with that in a law enforcement matter is what came up from the most recent um, discussion. We talked at this Board about, until we have this task force, let's go ahead and purchase something. I hesitate to say we should spend money on something that we don't know how we plan to use and whether or not what we spend on actually fits the needs we want. So, because I feel confident that we have a system we can use, I still wanna pursue this conversation and, and talk about what it is that we wanna see and then see if there's a product that fits into that or what we currently have already suits our needs. Because if we're gonna spend money, it's an annual cost, it's not a one-time cost. Um, and I wanna make sure we're gonna use it and we're gonna use it to meet our needs and that we have some protocols in place. I did, um, we, I did, I, we do have quotes that I got based on our conversation last time from Everbridge and then from a product called Code Red. So, Everbridge, um, currently Talon and Stafford have and Code Red is used by the town of Mansfield. One is definitely cheaper than others, but I have questions about the cost. And the Code Red, I apologize, you may not have that yet. Robin and I saw a demonstration that ended at four o'clock today and then she sent over the proposal. So, I can share all of that. Um, and it had some great capabilities for community messaging as well, not just emergency messaging. They both have features about opting in and so it's important for us to do a lot of PR work to get people, no matter what we use. Our own system on top of what's available at TN or just the Everbridge at TN. We really need to do some PR to get people to sign into that. I, I will tell you, I won't tell you which of us, um, but one of the two first selectmen discovered that, uh, uh, that we weren't on the system we thought we were because you didn't realize that when your home number went off, because you no longer have a home phone, that your cellphones may or may not be there. You kind of take for granted, right? We both get the messages as, um, uh, as first selectmen, so you take for granted that you know the message is there, that you're getting it. So, I think oftentimes there are people that don't realize, oh, I signed up for that five years ago, but I had a completely different cellphone. I need to do that again. So, there's constant education that needs to be done with either of these systems. Um, one of the things that stood out to me in the demonstration from Code Red this afternoon was their talk about, um, what our SOPs are. And if we don't have those, how do we know how we're gonna utilize the system? And for instance, if there's a missing person, do you send out a call at, after nine PM? It would go to everyone and wake up everyone in our bedroom committee, uh, a community for a missing person that may not be emergent or something that may not be emergent, are you gonna call everyone in town and wake them up at midnight? Or are those things that would be done in a text or an email? And your operating procedures would, um, kind of give you guidance on that. So, while I still agree, and I think we all did, hopefully John will be back, that we need, um, procedures in place. I'd like to make sure that whatever funding we put out there meets the need. We wouldn't go buy a truck if we didn't know it was the truck that met the need. So, I don't want us to jump ahead of ourselves because we're reacting and only because we've been reassured that we have a capability in place. And the messaging is where it comes into play with law enforcement, with a law enforcement matter. Mary and I did talk about what's within our jurisdiction and what's not and, and getting some understanding from that. And having those conversations with someone from law enforcement at the table, I think will be key. So, that's, that's why I'm still proposing we have this conversation and hold off on spending money until we know that it meets our need.
I agree and I think, um, knowing that we have the capability to send out emergency messages right now, I mean, that's what, that's really what, um, the community was calling for.
Right.
Um, uh, the knowledge to have that, the better utilize, utilization of that system. I don't think we need to, uh, I mean, am I allowed, so, I don't think we need to plan, plan to spend $6,200 this year. This isn't the time to spend $6,200 this year and then $6,000 for three years after that, um, when we already have an emergency notification system that we have access to, that, you know, now we can put procedures in place for using that and accessing that. There are already 2,800 people signing up rather than starting from zero.
The 2,800, um, contacts, whether that be-
Right, sorry.
That could be, I can tell you in my household, there's emails and phones, so there's probably seven of those just from me.
Okay, so-
I, I said the same thing and I wanna make sure we understand.
Yep, no, but it's a very important clarification. So, 2,800 contacts, um, contact points, I guess, um, in that system, uh, as opposed to a system where we would have zero from outside, you know, from the, from the start. Um, so I, I mean, I think what we need to do is figure out how we better advocate for using the CT Alert for our emergencies and then let the, the committee ruminate on whether we need something else unique for communicating things that wouldn't necessarily fall onto the CT Alert system. But I don't see why we wouldn't take advantage of that system that's already in place and already has a significant number of contacts.
And I assure you that we do, like, I, I worked with our emergency management director at the beginning of COVID when you all received the COVID, that came from my office and that came from here. And so, we know we have the capability. This was one of those unusual times where, you know, and you heard Doug say it and, and he was very clear when I went to TN and met with him that if I had called him and told him to send something out about a police matter, I would have very politely said-
You've checked with the police.
When did I correct?
Yeah.
And I did, and, and I, you know, I did ask the question to the police. So, I think, I think sometimes, uh, you know, we assume things are gonna happen one way when it doesn't. Uh, in this case, we spoke up clearly, I think they see the need and I think they'll work with us and, and look at their procedures in the future. But there, there were some great capabilities to the admin side of both of these. That system won't change, even if we get our own admin side. But it is a very different way to communicate and we can use it on different levels, but do we wanna incur the costs? And some of the question was, we need to, you know, make sure we feel safe in, in our things and is, is this what it's gonna take to make us safe? So, I think that task force can look at different things, um, at the same time, so, and, and have a little bit of a different conversation.
Right. And in the meantime, there is a CT Alert and-
Yes.
Everybody should be signing themselves up for that.
Yes.
CT Alert, well, that's, that was my basic, uh, my basic concern. We do have something that we can use right now.
Mm-hmm.
So, I, I'm happy. Now, the people on your proposed task force, uh, how are we gonna choose the four citizens?
So, I would say we, you know, put it out there and ask for people to come to us. Uh, you know, they need to apply again, I definitely got some names after, um, our, our special meeting on May 27th. And I would assume that some of those people may still come forward and then that we talk about that, we, we take what they bring to us and as a Board, we decide who those would be. You know, we would decide who they're in place. Um, and, and I, I, I would like to amend that the member representing Wellington EMS is determined by, uh, Wellington Hill and Willing, Wellington Hill Fire Department and Wellington Fire Department Number One together. So, they could send us one member.
Okay.
That, they can determine that or, or we could determine that, that would be up to us. But I'd rather they send us a name, I think that would be more beneficial.
If they send a name, just like the, the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
And who, who else? Is the Board of Ed on that?
It is.
Yeah, okay, they, they would send us a name and we'd, uh-
Correct. And I did, in my motion, I did say recommended by Board of Finance or recommended by BOE, so they send their- They, the Board of Ed has their own messaging system, but I think it's important that some of these townwide matters, we work together because some of those, uh, you know, one of those SOPs could be how we work with the Board so that if we're sending something out, um, the superintendent is sending out a similar message through his. It would be maybe a, a second item that some parents would receive because they might be signed up for both, but that's okay. But I think some matters, it would be important, um, to work together on. So, I don't, because they have their own messenger system, I don't wanna discount the impact, um, from the Board of Education as well. And this makes it a ten-member Board, but a nine-member voting Board, so that member of law enforcement would not be a voting member. And, I do, um, I do have a draft charge.
And I, you're, I assume you're talking about the state police?
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have any of, that's, that's our only law enforcement, so yeah. I mean, we could pick someone else if we wanted, but I don't suppose that would benefit us. We have quite a few, you know, the, I, I would reach out to Troop C, um, and, and let them know and they could determine who they wanted. We, we also have a, a number of, um, fine, uh, state police officers who happen to be residents, but we would still make that so that the law enforcement representative was non-voting. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
What was the, I thought we were discussing, what was the motion, was there-
I had, I, the motion was to form a committee called the Emergency Communications Task Force. Okay, all right, that was unanimous. All right, I do have a second motion and this is one we can certainly discuss. Um, you, I, I move to have the charge of the Emergency Communications Task Force be as follows. To explore uses, usage and cost implications of an emergency response system for the town of Wellington to develop protocols for usage of emergency response systems, including a regional approach and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen.
Well, um-
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Liza. All right, now discussion, John.
Okay, so, uh-
Want me to read it again?
Yeah, read it, yeah, please.
Sure, so the charge would be to explore usage and cost implications of an emergency response system for the town of Wellington to develop protocols for usage of emergency response systems, including a regional approach and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. That, that, the, what could come out of there may not be a recommendation to purchase a system, but protocols for how we, how we would use what is available to us. And that may be very well what, um, what the recommendation is. So, there, you know, it's not to choose something and tell us what it should be, it's to explore the usage of a system and cost implications. And that would give us the ability to have a widespread conversation about what it is we're looking for as a town.
Okay.
And then I'll share the items, um, where we started, um, from the two, these are only two systems that we looked at. Stuart is willing to, um, our, our EMD, Stuart Cobb, um, got these quotes for us and set up the demonstration, um, that I saw today. Um, it does, you know, there, there's a lot of pieces that would have to be in play, but I think it's important that, again, before we purchase something, it meets our needs and that we know how we're gonna use it and we have some protocols in place so that it's just not, uh, willy-nilly. Someone who has the missile codes is just pushing the button and sending things. So, I didn't see a demo, um, for just the admin side of Everbridge. I got a lot of behind the scenes of that talking, um, when I went out to TN. But I really, I saw it in place for very different things than emergency communications from the Code Red. So, it has a lot of abilities to communicate with people in various ways, uh, which is nice. But whether or not we wanna spend that funding and that meets our need is to be determined.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion on the charge? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimous. Thank you all, so we'll put something out asking, um, for those recommendations from Boards and members of the public. All right, COVID update, uh, Wellington, um, still, we are at three, 13, um, positive COVID cases. So, we have been very fortunate here. We have had, um, zero deaths as a result of COVID here, um, in town residents. Um, although certainly our state and then our country has seen, um, many unfortunate, um, deaths because of this. So, um, I, I think our, our townspeople are, are doing a pretty good job at keeping themselves safe and we, we isolate pretty well out here in our neck of the woods. Um, and we have zero probable cases currently. We are moving forward, um, with opening things, the staff at the Town Office Building. We now have some, um, departments who are fully staffed, uh, others are at least one person here every day and beginning Monday, the 29th, we will have, um, everyone working back here, um, with the exception of, uh, you know, potentially a, an employee here or there depending on their circumstances. So, we'll still take those, right, case by case and they'll be working from home if need be. Um, we're still not opening to the public yet, although we're getting set in here. So, if you were, um, to have an appointment and come to visit us, you might see some different things. There'll be a new mailbox, uh, a new drop box out front for tax payments. Eventually, the, um, town clerk and registrars will be getting something that's coming from Secretary of State for ballot, um, for absentee ballots. There are markings on the floor that mark off six feet. I can tell you if there's someone in the hallway, the next six-foot, um, distance puts your right in the way of them. So, it's, it's, it's very difficult to keep a distance in this building, which is why, um, we still are not ready to open to the public yet. So, we'll be doing things by appointment, um, for the foreseeable future. The, um, our Public Works Director plans to, with the exception of the swap shed, open up, um, everything else, normal operations at the transfer station. So, currently, it's just bulk waste and garbage recycling. So, we'll open up to taking in things, um, that there may be a fee for and, um, that will be ready by Wednesday, July 1st, so we'll put protocols in place for that. John?
Excuse me, uh-
Yes.
What's the, um, returnables for Boy Scouts?
So, that's, so, I, I reached out to some, I, I gotta reach out to them and talk to them about that. That's whether or not they're ready to do that. And until they're ready to take those on, I don't suppose that will come back.
Yeah.
My garage is getting full.
It's getting full. I'll let them know it's getting full. So, especially in the beginning, you couldn't return them and, and even now, I believe there's still a limit on how many you can return some places. Um, so, we'll check in with the Boy Scouts and see if they're ready for that, um, and then let you know. The swap shed, listen to that, um, I think we all love that. I have a special section at my house for things to go in the swap shed when it's open, but social distance is an issue over there. And we don't have staff to monitor that and there's no way to, to get into that yet. So, until we can have a clear procedure, we're gonna keep that closed for now. So, if people will just bear with us, um, I know we have things that we wanna get rid of and people like to, to, to bring other things home, but in the grand scheme, that's, um, not going to, to hurt us if we wait a little bit longer. I want my pile gone. I apologize, the lights keep going out here. Uh, but everything else will go. Midneirock, we host the Midneirock site, um, for chemicals can be returned. Uh, Troy is reaching out to them, um, you know, they're, they're still waiting. We have asked, because we are a host site, they need to do something because people have left things. And now you see the very unsightly sign that was left. Um, when we requested, they put some signage up about people leaving things and it's more communication. So, we're hoping that if we can social distance and, and open different things up, that maybe they can still open that up, uh, once a month to have people take them so that they're not left, um, there for us to dispose of, um, which we don't. We, we have to call them and they have to come out and get them. So, I'll, I'll keep you posted as to whether or not Midneirock begins to open up again. Um, when, this Wednesday, uh, begins Phase Two, so there'll be some indoor seating at restaurants. The gyms will open. When, this Wednesday begins phase two, so there'll be some indoor seating at restaurants, the gyms will open. Tattoos, parlors will move up to fifty person outdoor events. You'll start to see some sports, we anticipate the potential of opening up some things, more things down at River Road. Once we can get some signage and some procedures in place, so we're moving towards opening. I believe now all of the restaurants in town are. Open and functioning and they'll start to open a little bit more so they can get people inside. So if you're able and feel comfortable visiting some of those businesses, I encourage you to. We can keep supporting our, our local business, whether it be in takeout or if you. Feel crazy enough to go and sit out on the patio, I did. We've, we've just about had our fill of. Wellington Pizza, that's not true, you can never have your fill of Wellington Pizza and River and Rail, and we love going there, so now that Hilltop is open. I did visit there and sit on the patio, I was nervous as heck. But wore my mask until it was time to sit outside and enjoy their patio, so happy to support. The businesses, the restaurants that we have here in town, so I apologize, someone's calling me off of late. So continue to do so, and we hope that they're able to open up to fifty percent capacity. On Wednesday, which I believe they're planning on, and I don't have confirmation, but I hear River and Rail may start doing some breakfast at that half capacity. So eager to have some eggs and bacon, too. Do you have any questions about COVID related? Looks like four weeks from now, hopefully, in and around July seventeenth will be phase three and then potentially. Four weeks after that into August will be phase four, I have no information on phase three or phase four currently, specifics.
One question, Erica, this, this might be a really old outdated memory that I have. So encouraging folks to make payments online through the online credit and debit card system. There's still a fee to do that or no?
There is, there is a convenience fee, I'm reading from Janice's note that will go to everyone. A convenience fee of two point nine percent for credit cards. If you do an EFT online payment, it's a flat dollar ninety five, no matter how much your payment is. So if you use your credit card, you pay two point nine percent of the payment, if you do an EFT, it's a dollar ninety five flat. And that unfortunately, we did ask and they will not waive. But if people feel the need to pay, you can pay with a check in the mail, you can put it into the Dropbox. And if you feel the need, someone wants to pay in person by cash, we don't take the credit cards here, you still do that online. Then they could call and make an appointment and Janice will still take cash, I know some towns have said no cash payments. Our tax collector is willing to take cash payments and is comfortable doing so, but so we'll do that by appointment. But yes, we couldn't avoid those fees, we did try. So. We understand, they have to make some money too. As, as, as much as I wish they didn't, so. All right, any other COVID related questions? You know, I hope everyone continues to stay healthy and our numbers continue to stay where they are, I will ask. I see Alex Moore on the call, Alex on the. On the EMS side. Do you have anything COVID related you'd like to update or share with us?
Nothing to add, knock on wood, so far.
That's good, that's good news, and our EMD Stuart is also online, Stuart, do you have anything you'd like to update us on? I'm going to guess no, he might pop on here in a minute. All right, anything else? Oh, I see I'm unmute, Stuart, do you have anything for us? No, okay, thank you. All right, any other questions or discussions on this item? All right, I will move to present to speak then, again, I'll ask if you're on camera, give me a wave. If you do not want to go on camera and you do not have to to speak, you can go simply under the participants tab, choose raise hand, raise your hand and we will. Call on you as we see them. I again ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes, is there anyone present to speak? See no one raising their hand, you should all, Mike, do they have the ability to unmute themselves if so desired?
Yep, they can.
Give one more call for a present to speak. All right, we'll move along to good and welfare. We had a dog rabies clinic here this weekend, and I believe we had somewhere just over thirty. Dogs and several more came in and were able to register their dogs. Dog registration, which typically ends at the end of June. Without a penalty is now going through the end of July without a penalty. So they are very busy in the town clerk's office registering those dogs, so. If I see a dog here on camera, make sure you get them all registered up, all right?
Clearly, there are no dogs here, I have no idea what you're talking about.
No dogs, no dogs, nobody's sleeping behind you. I want to congratulate our fourth graders who are being promoted and moving on to Hall School. Again, not how they would want it, but I think tomorrow is their big day. So if you are on social media and you, if you are on Facebook, do they have their own page? How will we follow them like you, will we not, will we not get to see it like we did Hall School?
Oh, you will, it'll be on the Hall School page, on the Hall School Facebook, same spot.
So follow the Hall School Facebook, if you didn't on Friday, then you missed a lot of fun. So I want to congratulate those fourth graders who are getting their big day tomorrow. And the eighth graders who completed their time at Wellington Public Schools. And moving on to high school, they had quite a day on Friday, again. Not what they all hoped, but if you had the opportunity to watch any of it, Mr. Stevens. Facebook Lives, just about everyone. If not every one of them, they had an ice cream truck or a. Like a snow cone truck follow them and there was something said to each student by a teacher, they were given their cap and any awards. That they had, the sign with their face on it, got to take pictures with the mascot who was revealed to be a very energetic Mrs. Frazanelli. And it was wonderful to watch, so it was nice that people who wouldn't normally be able to go to graduation could see these young people and, and I, I saw lots of smiles. So kudos to Mr. Stevens and his administration who made that day happen, because I really enjoyed it as a towns person. So I would always prefer to stand under my banner and watch them with their banner, but that just wasn't meant to be this year, so. And I finally want to congratulate all of our high school seniors who are within the next week or so graduating. I apologize, I don't know what Wyndham Tech's graduation is, EF Smith's is now next Monday. And wish them much success and happiness and whatever their future endeavors are, again, not how they thought they'd be going out, but. Here we go, and Mrs. Campbell, who can't join us tonight, Robin, asked me to thank everyone at Hall School for Friday's activities. As an A three parent, it was, it was much appreciated. Jenny held in Human Services a food distribution on Friday. And I see Jenny still on the call, I don't know Jenny, I apologize, I didn't see you today, how many? How many? People we were able to service in that food distribution?
Um, we ended up having fifty three people total, fifty three families.
Great, so thank you to everyone who volunteered and helped Jenny with that day, there were masks given out again and either, and some household supplies. And food, and it was a beautiful day and I saw a constant string of cars and it was nice while I was outside to just, you know, see a couple of faces that you don't see all the time. So thank you to everyone who donated food to make that possible. And Jenny will still continue to take food donations from people, so reach out to her, there's never, not a need for that COVID or not. So thank you to everyone who made it possible. Do either of you, I want to thank Doug Raceacott for coming out and speaking to us about our services and I want to thank our EMD for. You know, getting ahead of this and getting us quotes on some of these systems, so we have a place for this new task force to start. John or Liza, do you have any good and welfare items?
No.
Okay, and then I'll end with thanking all of those who stepped forward during the process of filling different appointments. I always. You know, you wish that you had enough spots for people who want to serve, and I always encourage people to try to serve your community, whatever capacity that is. And there's certainly many places we can all help, so. With that, we now have three weeks before we see each other again, not till July sixth, so. Happy summer, summer will begin before we see each other and, and a Fourth of July, so yesterday was Flag Day, we didn't have any. Big ceremony for that here, or really any fun, I meant to wear red, white and blue today, but I remembered about noon time. So it's not the same not going to center school and waving our flags.
They did have a ceremony.
Did they, at the schools?
They maxed out their Zoom room at a hundred people.
Oh.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to see a lot of these things still happening by Zoom, and thank you to Catherine for filling in for Robin tonight, we hope she's back to typing soon. Seeing no other business, I will move to adjourn at eight thirty one. Thank you all, have a good evening. Good night.